Folks, welcome everyone. I call this special board meeting to order at this point. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Good afternoon. Pete Wildebohr.
Present.
Melissa Mason. Josie Barnhart.
Here.
Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Stephanie Cravill.
Here.
Hugh McManus.
Here.
There he is. There he is.
And Stephanie Walker.
Here.
Thank you, board members, for being here. Thank you to everyone else for being here today. We are going to carry on with our invocation at this time.
Sovereign God, you are our Lord and the keeper of our universe. Your word reminds us, we are your people and the sheep of your pasture. Today, as the board begins their meeting for the betterment of our schools, we thank you for the leadership, for every teacher, every faculty and staff member, and particularly for our students. We pray for your continued protection over every campus and all of our students. We pray specifically that you will grant this board direction, wisdom, and clarity in their decision-making so that whatever decisions they make will be for the improvement and betterment of our schools. We thank you for your guidance and your loving kindness. May we forever give your name praise. Amen.
I'd ask Ms. Cravill to lead us into the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this moment, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the agenda.
Second.
Second in discussion. If there are none, all there, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. McManus? Ms. McManus? Ms. McManus?
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Do you approve the agenda?
You're breaking up.
Sorry. Do you approve the agenda, sir?
I can't hear you. What?
Do you approve the agenda?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. That's a six-zero. Thank you. We'll start with the New Hanover High School mobile units. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we're asking the Board of Education approve a lease for modular classroom space at New Hanover High School needed to provide additional space during the ongoing construction activities at the site. This lease will provide three two-classroom modular buildings for a total of six classrooms. The term of the lease is for 12 months. It includes monthly charge for the units as well as delivery, setup, and removal at the end of the lease. We can terminate the lease at any time or extend the lease if, for whatever reason, the mobiles were needed longer than 12 months. The total value of the lease agreement, including 12-month lease for the units, is $245,883.60. That funding is available in the budget that was previously approved by the Board of Education for construction at New Hanover High School.
Board members, any questions?
I do. We got a couple emails this week from somebody else that's waiting on their mobile units. The board is next.
They're there.
They're there.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure so that the atmosphere knew that they're there.
I originally got that email late June and replied back, but the units, there are two classroom units, and they are on-site, and they're in the process of being set up now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barnhart?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. My question, you said that the board was already allocated for previously, so this is already currently in repelling, so this would not be a new expense that we need to reach out to the county commissioners? Or are you saying this was a not allocated for expense? I know we have money in fund balance, but I'm...
This money was already allocated and budgeted for the construction project at New Hanover, so there's not an additional request to the board for funding, from fund balance, or the county commissioners.
Right, thank you.
Ms. Walker?
Yes, thank you. Can we talk a little bit about timeline? And are they going to go in immediately? Or, I mean, is it appropriate to talk about anything that's going on with the school at this time?
Well, timeline for the mobile units is we are expediting this just as fast as we can. I mean, our goal obviously would have, would be to have these set up and available for use on the first day of school. These units are, they're already constructed. They're sitting at the factory, ready to ship. We actually met the mobile manufacturer or the installer on-site yesterday to determine where and how they would be placed. We're meeting with Duke Energy on Thursday. We're already talking to the city and utility authority, you know, about all the utility connections.
Can I just follow up with that? What does that mean for the school? So they're going to be in the front of the school? Front left, if you're looking at it? And is it going to block off that part? I mean, I guess I'm just trying to, just so everybody knows that what we're clear in what we're doing.
So we're going to put these on the south side of Market Street, across from the George West Building. There's a small parking lot there that hasn't been used since we put a gate across 13th Street. And so we will, we're going to shoehorn these mobile units into that parking lot and then connect them all with one ramp and elevated platform system.
So I have a couple questions. I'm going to piggyback off that one. Do you have a layout that we could look at?
I do not. But, I mean, I can, eventually, I'll be glad to give you a layout of...
I'm envisioning it myself, but I just would like to see the engineering drawing that shows how we're shoehorning us in for that. So my next question was parking. And so I first was envisioning the parking lot in front of George West. That's still going to be open?
Yes, ma'am.
Where students and staff park? Okay. And then, how does the two classrooms per trailer work? Is there a wall down the middle? Is it like a partition? Am I going to be able to really hear the other class on the other side of that partition?
Well, there's a... No, you, it's similar to the eight classroom units that we have at some of the schools. We have some units that are four, six, and eight classrooms. It's similar to those.
Okay. And does each path have its own bathroom?
You know, I'm not sure if there's one common bathroom or each unit or each classroom has its bathroom, but it is definitely one or the other. That was part of the problem in finding units that did have restrooms.
And so they will be within the four walls of the trailer? They don't have to go outside?
Correct.
So we won't need a walkway or anything like that?
Correct.
Okay. And then the last thing, you kind of alluded to this a little bit, but will these classrooms be ready on day one of school? And if they're not, what do we do with the kids that are supposed to go into those?
So we are working with the school weekly, almost daily. And we, our goal, you know, is to have these units ready, but it is extremely tight to get these units in and ready for the first day of school. So we're working with Hanover for a Plan A and Plan B, and they will be able to accommodate the students on-site if they're not ready until we can occupy.
So to you and to Captain Superintendent Barnes, it would be, I'm not really happy with, we are going to do our best. You know, we've got a lot of students that we've got to move. So at what point will we call it? Or will you tell us basically what's going on? And parents are really kind of concerned of which students are going to be affected? Like which students or programs will go into those trailers? Will YCM stay as a whole? Will all the ninth graders leave? Will all the 10th graders leave to go to the campus? So that's...
So no one's leaving. No one's leaving the campus.
Not, okay, so they're not leaving the campus, but they're leaving the big building.
There are a couple of SDA programs that are being moved to Mosley.
Okay, so that's leaving the campus. That's one.
But other than that, everyone, the best option, everyone agreed, was to accommodate the rest of the student body out on-site on campus.
Okay, so I was just curious.
If it pleased the board, I can give you folks an update as exactly where we are at the next board meeting, if that works for you guys. If we can, you think we can be ready to give them a heads-up by then?
Sure. We can, I mean, we can provide all the information we have at that time. And I think Mr. Worthington, Mr. Sutton, Mr. Haney are working hard on coming up with that plan and getting it finalized.
Some of the things we've already done are to work with the, Mr. Worthington is obviously the executive director and Philip about sharing classroom space, like some of our larger schools do, as well as Julie's been working to approve as many of the off-site requests for student transfers we can. They'll bring the number of students to accommodate down. But I'll make sure I give you guys an update.
Thank you. And I have been asked to monitor a bit and make sure you could do the microphone. Ms. McManus, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
No, sir, okay. Just walk the second time then?
Yes, but you just got one more. In that update, can we kind of get an idea of what is, what is being done to the building? Like what hallways aren't accessible? Or, I mean, I've heard some things about what walls look like. So I guess I'm just trying to get an idea of the physical space and where students can and cannot go in the building.
So that, there's, none of that has changed from the last update. And if you, the main building, the south-facing wall runs parallel to Market Street, and that corridor will remain open for students. Everything north of that corridor, all the classrooms, the rest of the spaces within the building is all open to students. The only area that is closed is from the corridor to the outside wall. And so, and that's all three floors.
And the vestibule, is that still going on?
The vestibule will, that's part of that south-facing wall, so that will be closed. And the main entrance will be relocated.
Yes, so our parents are going to be wondering where our, where parents are going to, should be directed to park, you know, when they come either to volunteer or to check in their student or to meet with their student, teachers and staff. The, where, have we given some thought about what the Open House will look like? And will parents know this information prior to Open House? So that we're not having, you know, everybody in a frenzy at Open House trying to figure out where things are. So I guess that leads me to the question of what kind of communication are we going to be using to parents and the community? Because parents aren't the only ones who access that building. So they don't get a letter from Mr. Sutton and maybe even you, you know, or communication, you know, putting it all out. But there are other people who access that building. So I think that we're going to have to make sure that we have real clear instructions on...
So we're meeting tomorrow with Ms. Beam and Mr. Sutton, Mr. Haney, the rest of their staff, to look at what communication is needed, how best to communicate that out to parents and students and staff. We've identified the main entrance and where the visitor parking is. They're identifying what signage is needed. We're anticipating that we'll have site plans that indicate where the main entrance is, what the pedestrian circulation is going to look like, and where the parking is. And we'll get that out to the schools. We'll have it posted on their website, social media, and many other ways as we can think of to get that out ahead of time.
Okay, yeah, and I didn't want you to think that I wanted us to post those pictures because we're not allowed or we shouldn't be posting our site plans, you know. But, and I know you know that. I didn't want anybody to take away from the, take away that they're hearing me say, what does it look like inside? Because we don't do that.
You're right, but I think we can post enough of a site plan to identify where visitor parking is and where you access the main office.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I know this has been tough.
And just following up on what Ms. Cravill was suggesting. I mean, could you not, Ms. Beam, create a place and then direct everybody to the place? And then the place online is where everybody goes to get the latest updates?
Yeah, that is the plan. We built a custom webpage for the Hanover recognition when their plans change. And we're going to do a similar thing for this and just point parents to that. But we can also do a pop-up on the main district webpage, on our facilities rental page, on the New Hanover page, and really get the word out in that way.
That's great.
Yeah, one last question I forgot to ask was on the top of my list, Eddie. So taking out all the money that you've asked us, you know, to take out, where does that leave us in our capital balance for projects that we have to work on?
Well, we haven't taken any money from other projects. The budget approved by the board, we're still within that budget for New Hanover. And I don't have an exact amount of money for you, but I could get that for you.
But this number is basically what we had already allocated for New Hanover High School specifically. We're not having to kind of move things around within our capital balance.
Correct.
Okay.
I move that we go forward with the lease for the New Hanover High School mobile units.
Second. First and second. Any further discussion? I do have a lease right here. Again, the total output would be $245,883.60. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Ms. McManus, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And Ms. McManus, you did aye, right?
I didn't aye.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
It's a high aye.
That carries six-zero.
He sounds so bad.
I will sign this right afterward, and we'll get back to Mr. Anderson. The next order of business is the superintendent process. Thanks, sir.
I contacted, and this conversation specifically is about the search for the new superintendent. I did contact the North Carolina School Boards Association last Friday. They did offer their services. I talked with Ashley today and let them know. My recommendation, obviously, to you, Mr. Wildebohr, and to the board, would be to do a comprehensive nationwide external search for the superintendent using a search firm, simply because they're going to have a broader reach and more resources. That amount of money is, while, you know, obviously would cost money, is not required to do an RFP or an RFQ. Since it's a service, it's not a product. So quite frankly, I've gotten some in the mail already, sort of like when you get a speeding ticket and you get a whole bunch of lawyers who email you stuff. So there are different options for superintendent search. I was, like I said, in contact with NCSBA. They tend to be a very reliable group of people to work with. So it's at the board's pleasure. I can work with the attorneys to contact a search firm if you'd like. There are several names we can look at. We can bring you back a cost analysis at the board meeting, and you can make a final decision if you'd like.
If there are any questions or discussion on that, or Ms. Cravill?
Yes, so the superintendent's search process also involves the interim.
Correct.
And so I thought we would have a little more discussion about that and not just skip right to the superintendent role with that because we have a school district that we need to run right now, and we need to have the best qualified people sitting in that seat. Someone that can have a fresh set of eyes, you know, on our district to help us, like we did before, you know, just skim off the top, you know, things that were there. So I would like for us to have a discussion here about using the NCSBA to lead us in, bring us some names for interim superintendents so that we can have all of, that what is available to us, you know, including what might be in our district, but also who might be available to do that with a independent third eye, you know, looking at us. So, and that search is free. It's part of our service or a part of our membership. So I would like to have some discussion about that before we start talking about the, the next steps. Because that is a next step, is getting an interim.
And the question I did ask, that's one, the county association, for example, also I can do a couple of names, but like Chair, I have to focus to do that. Like, I've shared many, close up with some people I have, of course, that have not at all said, hey, it's just, it seems easier. And I think they're very, very true, not to promise anything to anybody.
Right, and that's your job, is to take those in. Or the superintendent can get that, or our attorneys can also, you know, gather those names for us. But we have, we skipped over that conversation. So I wanted to make sure, or make my opinion known, that I think we need to have a discussion about the interim. And, and my recommendation would be to interview several candidates, internal and external, to make sure that we are getting what we need to right our ship. If we remember back to when this was happening before, none of us were on the board, but we were kind of watching from the sidelines, is that the interim superintendent is there to kind of just, again, have an independent third eye with a different perspective, not in, have a different perspective in general, and to help have our house in order, you know, before a superintendent comes. And so whatever that house in order looks like to us, I think we need to decide that. And I think the public needs to hear what our criteria will be for an interim and for a superintendent once we, you know, get there. Because if you remember, the public got to get input on qualities for the superintendent, you know, when it actually got to that part. I don't think, I don't remember having any input as a community member when they, when the board was hiring, you know, Mr. Burns, Dr. Burns, to come. His time with us was very productive, and I just want to make sure. And we only had like one issue going on. You know, now we have several, you know, little spiral graph wheels, you know, working together. And I just want to make sure that when our new superintendent is selected and comes, then we are ready to receive them. You know, we're ready to receive visitors in a clean house, all the dishes done, you know, all the linen's changed, you know, place for them to park, you know, kind of deal.
Yes, I did. I was going to say, what is the maximum timeline that we have for an interim? Or is there one? Okay, thank you.
So I, since I have never done this process before, I absolutely appreciate the fact that we have a school board association that can help us with that. I've definitely not been involved, like I said before, you know, I was elected in 2020. The previous board did the process, obviously, as well. Looking at the survey, we want to be as transparent as possible about everything that we do. And we want to make sure that we do, and I would like to see, anyway, the community involved as much as possible, you know, staff, everything. Because, you know, I know other districts do it that way. I have seen that, you know, from time to time. Other districts do allow the opportunity for the community to kind of, I mean, because essentially, we're all, we're all public servants. We all get paid with public dollars, and I think it's important for everyone to see that. And I don't know how long the timeline's going to be. Hopefully, we can figure that out. But we are going to need guidance, for sure, from the school board association. So that's, that's my two cents on hoping we can do this process and they help us with it.
And I'd like to piggyback on you, but I think that, one very valid point, I think it is very, you know, good that we have a town hall coming up. So that could be one of our tables, is actually, what would you like to see from our staff in superintendent? That could be, you know, one of the focal points. I mean, obviously, that's a huge, huge point, so. Ms. Bradford, did you have anything, you know, you can say with her?
I was just going to look at the town hall date. Isn't it like the 13th?
I'm going to say this is the 13th.
August the 13th.
Yeah, Tuesday, August the 13th. I think that's a good idea. So I'm going to reserve my questions until we get along.
Yeah, I was just going to, to piggyback on that. I thought we had already announced, not really officially announced, but we had announced because we were concerned that teachers weren't going to hear us. So that's what that forum was supposed to be about. You know, so we would have to have one quickly. And if we want to, if we want to allow, if we're talking about, I'm not certain where you're coming from on this one, Ms. Walker. Are you wanting input for the interim? Or are you just wanting interim, input for the super?
I don't care. Either one. I mean, they're kind of the same conversation, really. I mean, I'm sure they're, they're not going to want an interim that's worse or better than, than the permanent, so.
Yeah, I mean, it might be, you know, I don't think we have announced our, please tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we've announced our topics yet. So maybe that could be one of our topics.
You did it the last meeting.
Well, I mentioned possibilities, but I don't think I said this was exactly what it was going to be.
Gave suggestions. You just gave suggestions. But I don't think we've formalized it yet.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, it could be a situation that that's something we, I mean, obviously, we want to hear from our folks. Yeah, I think, you know, we talked about this one. We talked about, you know, climate being two, some other ones. But, you know, one of the big factors on climate would be, I think, you know, that superintendent, a leader, the interim superintendent and the interim superintendent.
Mr. McManus, we don't want to exclude you, sir. Do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, Fred, you're going to ask me. Yeah, I, first of all, are you going to require a superintendent's certificate? That's one. Number two, are we going to set out two or three expectation arenas? For example, discipline, accessibility, communications. I tend to want to lean to someone on the inside, which is good in the sense that they know everybody, everything, what's going on. They're familiar with, and versus someone who comes in, who just sits there, doesn't know the schools, the staff, the students, the history, the problems, which really, they don't do anything. But of course, there's also good news sometimes when you have new eyes, new vision. That's something we need to decide, something you need to discuss. What are the parameters with, with what we want to deal with?
And I would definitely agree. If I can, and please tell me, everybody, if I'm wrong, but I'm, I'm sure that the superintendent and the interim superintendent, if they don't have a superintendent's license, they can be hired, but they have to be paid out of, is that not correct?
Local money.
Local money, yes, sir.
I actually want to give a qualifier on that. There is a way to share with the state board the qualifications for them to approve that. So I would say that is not a hard and fast rule, as I thought that it was.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I know, that's what I said too, Ms. McManus.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cravill?
So I would like to make the motion that we use the NCSBA to... So I would like to make the motion that we use the NCSBA to conduct a search for the interim.
Okay. Is there a second? Do you need a second before we can go forward?
I, I like that. Can we amend it, though, to also, I mean, include other discussions? Because, I mean, we want to be guided by the School Board Association. I already said that, but I don't want to just exclude everything else aside from the School Board Association.
So, so, could you like to amend?
Would you like to change it? Do you want me to?
All right, let me just tell you what my intent was, and if you want to change the words and not the fact. I want to take this in a two-step process. I want to have, I am suggesting that our, not I want, I am suggesting that our board have two searches. One, for the interim, using the NCSBA to give us names and, and all they do is give us names. They do not recommend, they give us names and then we, amongst ourselves, decide what criteria we are looking for. And so that's what my intent was, is that motion was to only be for the interim and then if we need to, and when we get to the, the next step and we want to do a superintendent's search, then yes, I, I will make a second motion that we use them as well. But I wanted my motions to be separate so that we don't get ourselves confused that we are doing one thing interim and then we're doing the next thing superintendent, rather than us just going, okay, I think I like this person, you know, based on, you know, who you got, if we were anybody from our staff, you know, if anybody wants to throw their name in, if any one of us wants to throw our name in, you know, so we need to be real clear on that step. So that's, that was what my motion intent was, Ms. Walker.
So are you, are you going to make two motions? Is that what I'm hearing? Or are you just going to make this one first and that one later?
I, I want to make this one first, get it voted on, and then I will, if, if it's appropriate and we're ready to do that, I will make a second motion that we use the NCSBA to hire, to help us hire a superintendent. So that's what, that's what my, and, and you can second the motion without agreeing to it, just so we can talk about it.
Yeah, we'll second that then.
Okay, second, okay.
Ms. Bradford?
I don't want to limit ourselves to just one entity because I know you've gotten information from a couple of people that you sure don't know who they are, but do the broadest possible search we can across any, any avenues that we can without, you know, obviously, if it costs money, then you have to come back and tell us, hey, this is going to cost money, do we really want to do it or not? But we're, we're actually paying for the NCSBA because we have that huge membership fee, so it's not free. But I don't want to limit to just the NCSBA. I want to go across, I have an extremely broad background in hiring and you just, you just got to throw the widest net and, and see what your response is. Because if you limit it and you end up dragging the process out because you haven't cast a wide enough net, then that's, that's, it's limiting.
Okay. Okay. Well, let, let me get her because she's spoken already and then.
Mr. Chair, prior to me being able to vote on this, as one of the members not being present with this decision of being made, I think having a conversation about personnel will need to happen prior to me making my decision about this process. So I would like to go into the superintendent or the closed session before we go into this motion, so I will be saying no for this, but I agree with what Ms. Bradford is saying. I want to see a broad search, but I want to also have some conversation with my colleagues about personnel prior to making this.
Let me go to Ms. Walker, Ms. Grayville.
So I just want to understand, this is just about the interim search, right? This is not about the, the overall search? So I don't, I just wanted to be clear about that. I don't know how wide to cast a net for interim since we're really, time is of the essence. I mean, I think superintendent's search is going to take a lot longer, I believe. So if we're trying to get interim in quicker, I would like guidance and that's, you know.
Okay.
So just to maybe, to assuage Ms. Bradford's concerns, is if the NCSBA is leading that and we have names, we've gotten names, we forward them to the NCSBA and then they will give them to us. One of the things they also do is they do background checks for us and on the top, vetting, you know, for that. So that is a huge net for us not to keep our, to keep our cards close to our chest. If we know of anybody, we turn it over to the NCSBA. Here are our names, that if you have more, let us know and then we can go from there. So it's not like we are not throwing a wide net and then to Ms. Walker's point, time is of the essence and we got to get rolling because if by chance we were to pick somebody, you know, in our own, from, from our own system, we got to figure out also what to do in the positions that might be vacant, you know, which also takes a little time and, and, and discussion. So there's a lot of things that happened that, you know, we, we might have thought about before we fired the superintendent, but nonetheless, this is where we are. So I just want us to, one of the things that came out of our survey was that the board acts impulsively and doesn't plan. And so I wanted to, and if, if we are using the survey with the fidelity that I think that we're trying to, then we need to take that into account as well, you know, to look internally to ourselves and that we are following processes and we have a plan going forward.
Ms. Bradford, and then I'm going to jump up to Mr. McManus.
And I, I agree with Ms. Barnhart and I'd like to, you know, to substitute a motion that we go into closed session and have that conversation before we make any other decisions about things. It seems like the cards.
You can't substitute a motion on the floor. My motion, you have to either vote on it or we have to table it.
There's already a motion on the floor, so if we're going to make a separate one, you might have to wait till after this one's done.
Let me pull my little card. Substitute motion.
You guys, can you weigh in on that?
Yeah, can you, do you want?
I agree that we first go, go on the first motion.
Okay. Okay. Let's hear from Mr. McManus and then we will vote on the first motion. And just, just want to make sure I'm clear before I go to Mr. McManus. The motion, you did not amend the motion at all, so it's just basically to use them without any other discussion, without?
No. The motion was for us to, to use the NCSBA's services to help us get an interim immediately. That's my motion.
Okay. Mr. McManus, would you like to share to the, anything with the conversation, to the conversation with us? Mr. McManus?
Sir? I'm sorry if you're breaking up. I, I kind of agree, maybe closed session to set some parameters for what we want with individuals, what legally we can do in closed session.
Okay, so you, okay, you, you'd like closed session?
A question, Ms. Tom.
Yes, comment, Ms.?
We, we, we have to set our criteria in open session. We cannot go into closed session and start talking about what we want. We want a guy with blue hair, you know, we want nobody that wears glasses, you know, we can't do that in closed session. So the motion is, do we allow the NCSBA to help us with the search? And then they will guide us through the search process where we talk about the, the criteria that we want for them. The, it's not about trying to decide what the criteria is right now. It's do we want the NCSBA's help as a member service to help us find an interim superintendent? That's the whole intent. We're not discussing anything in there, and the only thing we can discuss in there is if we have names in mind.
Ms. Bradford?
I would still like to go to closed session and discuss the personnel issues of this in closed session before we have a vote on doing anything else. And at the same time, I don't want to limit it to just one entity, lock it in. This is our only entity that we're going to talk to. I want a much broader net than that. Whatever's available that, that we can afford or, you know, whatever. I'm feeling like I'm railroaded right now and I'm not liking it at all.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? If not, so the motion, Ms. Grayville's motion in front of us is to use the School Boards Association to help guide us in our interim search. Ms. Bowie, actually, I'm going to make a paper out. Would you please call for the rule?
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Wildabour?
Yes.
And Ms. McManus.
Yes.
That passes. Okay, so we'll use them. At this point, are there any other discussion under the superintendent process?
So that's where the, I don't know, if it's premature to make a motion to use the NCSBA's services for $21,500, you know, up to $25 for travel. If it's, if it's, if we're not comfortable making that motion now, but that, but the title of our discussion is the superintendent process. So I'm wondering what we'll say in closed session that would affect whether we want to use a search firm or not, you know, or if we want to try and do it ourselves, because we can't decide that in closed session either. That has to all be decided out here. So I just want to kind of close down item four on the superintendent's search. We're here to discuss that. So we can go into closed session to talk about any of the personnel issues that we want and I'm not, I'm not arguing that we need to do that next. But, so I just want to hear from my colleagues, what are we thinking about after we have an interim? Because we're going to have, we're going to come out of this meeting, I hope, with an interim either selected or, actually, I don't hope that. I hope we come out of this meeting with a, a process for selecting an interim. And then from there, we have to always have our eyes one step ahead, you know, just like, Eddie does within the, the projects. He's always got to be looking at Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. So I think that we need to have a discussion right now, not necessarily on what we're looking for in the superintendent, but are we going to use a search firm or not? Because we've got to get that kind of stuff rolling because it takes a long time. And we, our school starts in a month?
On Wednesday.
Well, Wednesday for some and then, and then two weeks after that for restart and then two weeks after, one week after that for our, you know, early college high schools. I mean, so we are in it right now and we're starting with, thank you, Dr. Barnes, we're starting with an acting superintendent who's going to get us there, get us to the start line. But we have to have our eye on the finish line and we have to, just like, I'll use an Olympic thing, I mean, that's one of the major trainings that they do, is they envision the end and they envision themselves being first across the finish line. And so we have to envision ourselves being first across the finish line, having the best person to lead our, our district going forward. And I think we would be remiss if we didn't have some discussion on what we want to do.
Okay. Ms. Barnhart?
My understanding of the vote that just happened is we have stopped ourselves from setting the criteria because now NCSBA is going to set the criteria for the interim.
No, that is not true. They don't set any criteria.
I'm trying to ask the question and trying to be respectful to ask the question.
Sorry, give her the mic.
We just passed for the interim.
She needs the mic.
NCSBA is, is doing the search process for the interim. So it's my understanding after that motion that we're not even going to be able to select anybody today or the, maybe the criteria suggestion. So with the motion that just passed, NCSBA, we're still going to be submitting the criteria for the interim? I am fine, honestly. Dr. Barnes, when he opened the session, he said to bring back a cost analysis of the national services, of the search services for the superintendent. I'm fine with that. I don't know what all, more that entailed other than the School Board Association, what other entities you were, were potentially suggesting. Absolutely, we need to do that, but I'm just, with what just happened with the interim search and NCSBA, did we just limit ourselves to whatever they tell us the criteria to be? And that's what I'm asking for clarity on both those things because he opened the meeting with saying that we could bring back potentially a cost analysis of the nationwide search.
Dr. Barnes?
All right, so I think that, I think the smartest thing for us to do, and I think Ms. Grayville has said it before, is to separate these two into two separate events, right? So unless I missed my guess, when I talked to the School Board Association, they wouldn't do a search for the interim, they would provide us with names and some people who are, who would be open to it and then this board would make a choice among them, whether through an interview process or not. That is for the short-term interim. For the long-term process, that would be the one that would be a funding. This, they would just sort of do us a solid and send us the names of people they've talked with and people they know are open to it. I could work with the attorneys to bring you a collection of names for the interim. For the, the actual superintendent's search, my only suggestion would be to sit down with the attorneys and bring you maybe a choice of three or four search agencies that can be used, the cost of them, you can pick a search firm and then off you go with that firm. Would be my suggestion, but again, at the will of the board.
And just to let you know, Dr. Barnes had received, and I've received the same thing and I was going to show it to everybody passing around afterwards, this is, you know, I'm not, I have no idea who these people even are, but McPherson and Jacobson is, is one that sent, I think, both of us information. And I have no problem passing that around so, you know, the board members can see that. That's not, I'm not saying anything, I have no idea if they're good, bad, otherwise, but that's, you know, so I think, as Dr. Barnes said, I think we probably get more, you know, School Board Association, this is the second. And I'm going to go around for other hands up and then we'll come back to you.
So my understanding is of what we've done is we're going to ask the NCSBA to do work for us, to bring us a list of names, but at the same time, there's outside people that you've talked to or, I don't know, whatever, that could then be added to that. So we're not limited to just the SBA. And from what, I, I talked to a board member who had gone through this process from another county and they said they don't, the SBA does not make recommendations. They just provide a list of people who might be interested and we go from there.
For you.
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Well, that's, I was just going to clarify because I think we did discuss that it's, it's not limiting ourselves as much as it's having aid and help in doing the search properly and they're going to be able to help us vet people properly. You've mentioned background checks, you mentioned licensure, all that stuff. So I don't think it's limiting us. I think, but they're just there to help us with this process and I think it's, it's fine if we have names, we want to submit to them as well, so.
Also, too, the, I don't know if you got, I don't have the statute memorized, maybe, you know, you know that, but the, a superintendent's licensure certificate is not required. You know, it, what is required is a four-year college degree and five years of managerial experience. And so pretty much everybody in this room could probably qualify, you know, to be a superintendent. Preferred is to have the licensure and things like that. So those are the kinds of issues and clarity that the NCSBA could bring. So I'm a little disappointed that they weren't here, you know, to tell us about that. But if we are concerned and I'm hearing the concern, I'm, I'm following up with my question.
I know, but she's got a point of order. So go ahead, I'm sorry.
What's the point of order?
I don't know.
Can we check with the attorneys? Because I have not recently read that, but I, I believe that the law says that they do have to have certification, so I'm confused and I don't want to move forward off that point until we know the answer.
We have the law in front of us and it doesn't appear that the interim can have a certification for the superintendent. Nor will the residency apply for the interim.
So the perm, so the perm does, the perm does, but the interim doesn't and the acting doesn't.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to you, Ms. Grayville.
According to NCSBA, you do, those are preferred. The licensure is preferred. So, but that would be something that they can help us with and that Mr. Prompey and Mr. Blanchard can find that out for us. But, so back to that point is if we feel like we need to develop any criteria, you know, for the interim, then now would be the time for us to discuss that, you know, the, we need to put out there, we want them to be A, B, and C. Or we just want them to follow our policies and help find, you know, bring to the surface any deficits that we might have. You know, so how, what you want from your interim, you know, if, if we're going to, if we want to do that, then now's the time to do it. Let's start throwing things out on the table and do. And going into, to closed session to talk about personnel without having criteria in mind, I, I don't think is fair to any other candidate that might have their name in the area.
Okay. Ms. Walker?
Is there any way we can, we can, we can still do that after we get out? I mean, I think it's appropriate. I hear several board members wanting to have a discussion, so I feel like that, that's the comfort level. I don't think there's anything wrong with talking about that criteria, but I think, I feel like people want to have a discussion.
I'm only talking about criteria for interim, not for the superintendent. We're not there yet. We're not there for the superintendent yet.
Mr. Chair, can we, oh, after Ms. Barnhart, can we move on and, are we going in, is that the next item? Can we go into that unless there's another motion? I mean, I think it's just talk.
Okay, Ms. Barnhart.
Thank you. On one of those lines, I agree with my colleague here and out of respect for our absentee member, I feel like we should hold off on whether or not we're going to choose the selecting process for the superintendent now and focus the rest of this meeting on interim superintendent. And with that, I make a motion pursuant to what's posted to go to closed session.
Second.
First and second to go in closed session. Any discussion? If not, we'll use it as you should have said and don't read all that. All in favor? Mr. McManus, you on board? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
All opposed. Mr. McManus, were you on?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, we are in closed session. That passes six to zero.
Okay. We're back in open session. Miss, I think she put her hand up first?
I'd like to make the motion that we add an item number seven after the superintendent's contract to discuss next steps for the interim superintendents.
Okay, we have a first and second. That will take a supermajority, folks, just in case we don't know that. Mr. McManus, are you on?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, all in favor of adding item seven, next steps? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. That carries six to zero. Now, Ms. Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, I move to pay out the superintendent's contract under the terms provided in paragraph 4A of his contract with the amount to be calculated by the staff after consulting with the attorneys, that amount to be released to the public after the fact. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? Wow, that was quick. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Carries again six to zero. Now, we're on the item that you added, Ms. Graybill.
Yeah, so if you could just lead us, just to recap what we need to do going forward for our super interim superintendents.
All right, so our next step would be to hire an interim superintendent. The steps would be to contact the State Board Association, state, North Carolina School, yes, there we go, association to get names. We also have some names that we've been given locally that come up with a list of criteria for those names, interview them as soon as possible, hoping to name the interim as early as the August board meeting.
August 6th.
August 6th, to be precise. So those are our next steps. Is there any questions or, yes, ma'am?
The only thing I would add is I would hope that we would do the interview process probably in two steps. It's never a good idea to interview once and hire. It's always a good idea to interview two or more times. So I would, I would, I would, I know that it's going to be hard on us. We're going to have to all get together. We're going to have to change our schedules, but I think it's critical that we do it and we don't just have one interview and make a decision.
I think it is very important. This is a very, very key position, obviously, for our school system. And then moving down the road, the superintendent is also a very, very key position. So, any other discussion on that? Mr. McManus?
No.
Okay, sir. All right.
Can we ask Ms. Bowie to survey us, like with a Google poll or a Google poll, on best dates so that we can at least start to narrow that down? And then some of us might have to go, okay, I'm going to have to switch something. But at least get that started concurrently with you getting it started with the NCSDA.
Yes, I think that'd be an excellent idea. So, Ms. Bowie, can you handle that, please? Thank you, ma'am. All right.
And then do we need to meet again to come up with our criteria? Like, we could have a special meeting, you know, for an hour, you know, or something along those lines? Or should we send you, well, actually, it doesn't matter. We could, we could send you things, but we're going to have to talk about it. We can't do that over email. So we need to get together anyway.
I think that's, so maybe we can have, you know, the criteria meeting very soon.
Very soon.
And then.
Like this week, if we can.
Yeah.
And that's in open session, right?
That would be in open session, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I will be in Raleigh because the board nominated me for that NCSDA legislative committee and I have to go up to Raleigh on Friday too, because I will not be there.
I will be away on Friday also.
On Friday?
No, Friday.
You're talking about this Friday?
Yes, like this week was mentioned, so I'm just saying, I already have an obligation.
Okay, well, Friday's off the, again, so we'll send, I'll ask Ms. Bowie to send that out tomorrow. So that would give us an opportunity to get our calendars together and.
We all try to, like, do it by, like, at least Monday or Tuesdays because we, the longer we wait, you know, like, if we can just all kind of look at our calendars, maybe we can just look at that now, you know. Are we, are we available, like, Monday or Tuesday, you know, to get together to discuss our criteria?
I'm available Tuesday.
Not available Tuesday?
No, I am.
So Monday's the 22nd, Tuesday's the 23rd?
Yes.
I'm available on Monday?
How about Tuesday?
I mean, I meant Tuesday.
23rd.
Tuesdays, Tuesday's actually even better for me. So let's, let's go ahead and tentatively put, Mr. McManus, are you available next Tuesday, a week from?
We'll have to see.
What time?
Zooming, zooming, sorry.
Well, I mean, even zooming.
Zooming, we ain't getting near you. Zooming.
Maybe.
I might not have to do it by then.
10 o'clock? Morning, 10 o'clock?
10 o'clock.
10, 10 o'clock Tuesday?
10 o'clock Tuesday. I'll check when I call Ms. Mason. I will check with her on that.
And I can do Monday if we have to switch, if we need to agree on an alternate.
B, A, M.
Yeah, I'm available Monday if we need to.
B, O, E.
For me, it has to be the afternoon because I'm not back in town until the afternoon on Monday, like later.
Well, I think everybody here is available on Tuesday at 10:00 and we'll hope that we can.
When does Melissa get done?
I don't know. I will call her.
I mean, respectfully, Mr. Chairman, just reach out too, but I think we have a tentative date that we can, most, majority of the board can work with and if we need to have a conversation with the members.
And she could email us, you know, she could email her input on that. I mean, I want everybody to be here because it's important.
Absolutely.
If she could email, if she has the opportunity to provide input, it's better than not being here.
10 to 2:00 what?
12, no later than 12.
No later than 12.
Yeah. Well, you said criteria for, you said an hour, didn't you?
I did say an hour, but the, I, I think if we all go home and start thinking about it, everybody's already sort of probably got in their mind, you know, what they want. So, they could, we could even email you with our list and then you could compile it so we have starting from, you know, on that, rather than going around the room. I want this, this, and this. I want this, you know, just that's up to you.
That's it. That's a great idea. All right. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
First and second. Any discussion? If not, all.
Thank you, Crystal, for helping.
Yeah. Thanks, Crystal. Thank you, Dager. All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are, that carries six zero.